The bumper says 12-7, 2020.
Nope.
Nope.
Can't read that.
I got 6:58.
Barely read the one in front.
I can see Isabel Kelly. And that's it. I can see the big names.
Oh, you've got Daniella on the right, little Gary, then you have Fred.
Oh, there's Danielle, okay.
I guess our left, Danielle is right.
I can see Daniella now. And Gary.
We're waiting on.
Who's next to Danielle?
Mark and Linda and.
What, is that Fred?
Fred? Secretary Gorbaya, then we also need.
Is that Fred next to Danielle?
That is.
How's your face wearing? What are you doing, Emily?
Actually, Secretary Gorbaya is going to swear in Emily, Karen, and Juan Carlos first at the left. She's going to do Isabel.
We have a question, somebody got their hand raised already. Just got her hand raised.
We can't get in.
But you are in, but you're in.
I just promoted you to panelist.
Oh, that was nice of you.
We've only been doing this for nine months. We'll get to it, we'll figure it out.
All right.
Phone in on the right thing. Because I sent them all the.
I didn't get the.
Well, there you are.
All right.
I sent 40.
From the eBay thing?
Not from the eBay. I sent the panelist thing from them.
One more time for sure, hey, I thought it was eBay. Yeah, I didn't get it yet. They get a panelist like that. There's a Q and A, there's a question on the bottom. It's all ready questions.
What?
Hi, it's Lynn, I'm not in either.
Okay. I don't know. There's Carrie.
There was one sent, but she just signs in.
All I got was the eBay thing.
That's all I can tell. There's Mrs. Skelly. I'm the Jase. She was there. Stolina, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she said that. There she is.
We have Lynn.
You got Juan Carlos, you got Carrie, we go.
Gang's all here.
Working on it.
That's the screen, I'm not using the screen, I just think this makes boxes.
You have to get a bigger TV. I have to get a bigger TV. It's done. Lynn get a haircut.
Yeah, just for the occasion, I got a haircut.
I can only see the top of Lynn's head because of my box. There's a lot of boxes on our screen right now, so hang in there, folks. We'll be getting started very shortly. We promised to be done before 11:30. For the record, it was 11:48, but there's a little. The only thing I'm going for is that the rest of us are at home.
Yes.
Just had to walk upstairs. Certainly not out of the bottom of my. Eight button, who's under eight button? I think it's the first thing he said.
I know.
I'm a little nervous, that's what I said.
Something I shouldn't have, I might have.
That'd be a long end, but.
Sometimes there's a pause. First, and you think you got.
I was gonna say, if you could change the other TV to the Steelers game, somebody in the audience would be happy.
They're gonna lose. One big bet.
Peter, you feel good about Saturday's game or what? Are we in? Are we in? So, I know we're good in the back, but it's at what point, too?
It is.
Hang in there, folks.
Good, Peter.
Just need another minute or two. Trained professionals.
Did you have Peter provoke something you didn't want?
His name's up there, so I'm assuming it's him.
Well, this is one, Peter, this is Peter Nerona, but I'm appearing under the name of Michelle Arias. I find law enforcement, that is the one thing you use to have an alias.
Yeah.
Having one of the same gender is irreparable, but yeah, do what you do.
That's not a particular alias.
I'm Patty Grantfield.
Passer Michelle.
It's not an alias, it's an Arias.
Ooh.
Is Terry on? Terry's here.
Yeah, I saw the Attorney General, my first thought was, I hope we don't have an open meetings violation somehow.
Hey, we have to hurry, I can hear Santa coming down our street, I'm gonna miss Eddie Kane.
He hasn't stopped in here a few years, it's kind of depressing. He has to stop in every first meeting of December. He stopped by my house the other night. He did?
He came by my house, too.
Early. He was zipping through.
We got him up both rates.
All right.
The joys of the grid.
All right. We ready? Okay. Welcome all, this is our swearing in ceremony for the Town of Portsmouth Town Council. With that being said, we are gonna have our, would we have the road call first? Just to let everybody know, the councilors.
Mr. Jacuzza?
Here.
Is that it?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Watson?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Brad Young.
All right. So tonight, this is our first virtual swearing in ceremony, so bear with us in case there's a few hiccups. We are live. I just want to give a quick overview of the agenda, for those of you that may not have the agenda or the agenda handy. We'll start with our flag ceremony, so we'll have the Portsmouth Boy Scout, Troop 82, providing that in a moment. Then we will have some outgoing council remarks, Mr. Lynn Katzen. We'll have opening remarks from the Honorable Jack Reed, U.S. Senator, and also from the Honorable Nellie Gorbaya, our Secretary of State. We'll proceed with our swearing in ceremony for the school committee and the town council. We'll have our officer election, and then we'll have a presentation to the outgoing council member. So. And then some further comments after. So, stay tuned. At this point, I'd like to have our Boy Scout, Troop 82. We're gonna stand for our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for our men and women, they're serving our way. So, Troop 182? Troop 82, sorry. When you guys are ready? Take it away.
Hello, my name is Sean Ober, I am the Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 82 here in Portsmouth. Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. One nation. Between justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you, Troop 82. Next, we'll have our outgoing council member remarks from Mr. Katzen.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity. I just want to say, take a few minutes to say thank you to a few people for their support and efforts through the years. There are too many people who deserve heartfelt thanks from me. To name them all, we'd be here till past 10 o'clock, so I just want to name a few. First, it's been a great privilege to serve on the Portsmouth Town Council, and I am humbled to have received the vote in support of so many people over the years. I am grateful to the people of Portsmouth to have had this opportunity, and so first and foremost, to the people of Portsmouth, thank you. To President Aguiar, Vice President Ujifusa, and my fellow Town Council members, thank you for your dedication, your civility, for listening to each other, to value each other's perspectives. It's been truly an honor to serve with each of you. To the town departments, fire, police, DPW, emergency management, everyone, town finance, town clerk, Canvas's office, I told you, there's too many to name. And to our town administrator, Rich Rainer. Everyone is working their best through the difficult challenge of staying operational through this COVID pandemic, and thank you for all you do. You truly rose to the task, and it's been a pleasure to work with such a great team of people. To Portsmouth Democratic Town Committee, in 2004, it was you who first asked me to run for office. That was before I even knew there was such a thing as a town committee. And since that time, you've always supported me, and I am truly grateful for your genuine support. Thank you. To the members of the next council, nearly identical to this one, thank you for stepping up to serve in this largely thankless job. And it's nearly always the case that you never know what the real challenge is going to be in the coming term. COVID-19 is a great example of that. I wish you well, I wish you good fortune. Finally, to the person who deserves the most thanks from me, my wife, Jody Redlich. Jody has put up with all the impositions that serving on the council entails, and she has always given me her unwavering support and her unconditional love. Jody, you are the center of gravity of our whole family, my entire universe. You make my life possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katzen. Okay, moving on to our opening remarks. At this point, I will be turning over to the Honorable Jack Reed, U.S. Senator.
Well, thank you very much, Kevin. Let me first recognize my colleagues in state government, Secretary of State Nellie Gorbaya, Treasurer Seth Magazinah, Attorney General Peter Nerona, and Representative Terry Courtford. And I particularly want to recognize and salute Lynn and Jody Katzen for their service to the community of Portsmouth. Thanks, Lynn, for what you've done, very much. I'm delighted to be here tonight to celebrate this inauguration with you. It is not only a ceremony, but it is a celebration. And it's a celebration not just for the people who are being sworn in, it's for their families and friends who support them and will continue to support them. In fact, I think you'll quickly realize, if you don't, that public life is a family job, not an individual job. And I know Portsmouth will be well represented by the members of the Town Council being sworn in tonight. Daniella Abbott, Kevin Aguiar, Michael Buttermeyer, Keith Hamilton, Andrew Kelly, Mark Ryan, and Linda Ujifusa. Thank you for your service, your dedication. And I'm confident that the students and parents of Portsmouth will be well served by the members of the school committee. Emily Copeland, Karen McDade, Juan Carlos Payero, and Isabel Kelly, thank you. In fact, school committee might be the hardest job, even harder than the U.S. Senate, frankly. Town councils and school committees are key to what we do. We can make great laws and do great things here, but unless there is that local contact with real people, getting the work done, getting their problem solved, government doesn't work. You make it work. Thank you. And thank you for stepping forward at such a critical moment. We are racked by a pandemic, which has terrible health consequences and terrible economic consequences, and you will have to deal with those. This is a special time to seek and accept public service. Thank you. Now, I'll try to do my part in Washington by getting the resources and the support that's necessary, but you will be the key actors. We need another relief package, we're working on it. I hope within a week or so, we can announce that there's more help coming from Washington, because we need it as a nation and as a people. Now, I know you're all committed to doing this hard work, I know you do it well. I want to thank you again for your commitment to the Town of Portsmouth, thanks for the work you do, and I commend you on all you've done in your hard work. And good luck and Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll be moving on to the Honorable Nellie Gorbaya, our Secretary of State.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Wow, it's wonderful to actually be able to be here in this very special event tonight, and thank you for inviting me to be a part of it. I want to first start by giving, of course, my deep regards to my colleagues in government that are here virtually. We are all working 24/7 through all of this to get it done, and it's really wonderful to see so many of you in this particular event. And I want to thank Lynn Katzen, who's been a really dear friend for all of his years of service to the Town of Portsmouth. He's been an amazing supporter of the public schools in his three terms on the council. He's focused on making Portsmouth a really, a very wonderful place to live and work, rent a business, or raise a family, and actually served twice on the Portsmouth Charter Review Committee. So, I'm sure he's gonna continue to be an engaged member of the Portsmouth community, I'm pretty sure we won't see the last of him. But thank him for all of those wonderful evenings and activities that he's been engaged with. Now, I have a special spot in my heart for Portsmouth, because we happen to be the safekeepers of the State Archives of the Portsmouth Compact. And I'm proud of the tradition that we have of safeguarding the compact and then bringing it every year to Portsmouth. And I'm hoping that come this vaccine and the next year, that we will be able to see the compact back in Portsmouth again sometime, if not next March, sometime next year. It's a wonderful event. This has been an interestingly challenging year for all of us in public service, and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fantastic work of your Register of Voters, Jackie Schultz, and also the great work of your town clerk, Jennifer West. We like to say that elections are a team sport, and even Jennifer's dad, who was on the Board of Elections, is a key part of this. So, you know, it's been an absolutely amazing experience to go through this election cycle, to be able to go out into public. As I hope all of you are receiving the thanks of the people of Rhode Island for being able to deliver an election that makes us all proud and shows that Rhode Island can do it better than many other states. So, with that being said, congratulations to the incoming council and the school committee. Portsmouth is showing a diversity that other cities and towns don't necessarily have, and so that also fills me with pride. But let me start by doing now, I guess, the oath of office, is that the next step then?
We'll be taking on the school committee.
Okay. All right.
You know that it's, there's, we have Emily Copeland, Karen McDade, and then Juan Carlos Payero.
Yes.
And then Isabel Kelly was appointed, so there's like a two-step process.
That is correct. So, I'm gonna do the first three first, the first three electeds, and then I'll do the appointed. So, you, Emily Copeland, Karen McDade, Juan Carlos Payero, do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States, and that you will well and truly execute the office of school committee member for the term for which you have been elected, or until another be engaged in your place, or until you be legally discharged therefrom. So help you God.
I do.
Okay.
We've got some static, hold on a second.
All right.
Are we good? We need Karen and Emily to say I do again?
I do.
I do.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now. Isabel Kelly, repeat after me. Are you unmuted?
Yep.
Good, okay. I state your name.
I, Isabel Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of school committee member.
The duties of office of school committee member.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just have some feedback here, so I'm not sure what it is. Mr.? Okay, so, we're on to the Town Council now.
Okay.
Hold on one second as we.
Okay. All right. So, basically, it'll be the same oath that we did at the beginning, and I will state everybody's names, and then at the end, you, let's go in order and say I do, so that it's in the records, that we will keep in the State Archives forever, as this is one of our first ever swearing ins by Zoom. Okay, so, you, Daniella Abbott, Kevin Aguiar, Michael Buttermeyer, Keith Hamilton, Andrew Kelly, J. Mark Ryan, and Linda Ujifusa, do solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful unto this state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States, and that you will well and truly execute the office of Town Council for the term for which you have been elected, or until another be engaged in your place, or until you be legally discharged therefrom, so help you God. Daniella?
I do.
Kevin?
I do.
Michael? Keith?
I do.
Andrew?
I do.
Mark?
I do.
Linda?
I do.
Congratulations.
Hey, thank you all. At this point, we will be moving on to the election of our council president, and I will be turning it over to our town clerk, Jen West, to preside over the selection of the council president.
According to the Town Charter, the town clerk shall provide, preside over the selection of the Town Council president. So, without further ado, I will now call for nominations for president. Are there any nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate, Mr. Kevin Aguiar.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? One more time, are there any further nominations? With that said, congratulations, Miss Graguer. Well, help me, there's no other nominations.
All right, we're gonna vote. We'll vote. That'll be my first action, let's vote.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes, I.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Hi.
Ms. Nelson?
Hi.
Ms. Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ms. Jacuzza?
Hi.
Hi. Motion passed at 7-0. Congratulations. Thank you. Hello, I'll take it back over, and we'll proceed with the election of our council vice president. At this point, I will take, are there any nominations for the council vice president?
Mr. President? I would like to nominate Ms. Ujifusa for council vice president.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Michael Buttermeyer. Okay, so we got. Is that it?
No.
No. We just heard just for nominations, okay, so we got, are there any other nominations for council vice president? Hey. Three nominations.
I didn't hear the last one.
Mr. Hamilton, been nominated? Hamilton? Are there any other nominations for vice president? Okay. So we have three nominations for council vice president. We will vote in order, and I will, I guess. Are you good in this? All right.
Ms. Abbott, who do you vote for?
Ms. Ujifusa.
Daniella, who do you vote for?
We're gonna, should we just do all for?
Well, me.
Because we have three. All right, okay. All right. So.
Well, it's whoever you want to nominate, or whoever you want to go for, and then there's a tie. Go back again.
So I'm.
So we had one vote for.
Well, I would support Mr. Michael Buttermeyer for council vice president.
Buttermeyer?
Ms. Nelson?
Hamilton?
I would support Mr. Buttermeyer, that's the lead, look here.
Kelly?
Ms. Ujifusa.
Dr. Ryan?
I vote for Linda Ujifusa.
And.
Linda, we need your vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I vote for myself.
All right, well, congratulations, four votes for Ms. Ujifusa for council vice president.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we will be moving on to our presentation to the outgoing council members. It's been our longstanding tradition that the outgoing council members, we've received the town pile. So, Mr. Katzen, I'm sure you've got more than one of these, that you'll be able to put on your wall. And I can't even open it at the moment, but I'm trying really hard. Oh, it's a new model. You got the, I'm told this is the new model. Very nice. So.
Ooh, shiny.
We hope that you will display this proudly. We'd like to thank you for, you know, not all your past two years of service on the council, but for all that you do for the Town of Portsmouth. I know that you've been involved with the town government for several years, as well as being on the Democratic Town Committee. Your efforts have definitely made Portsmouth a better place, so thank you for that. Where's the one I touched? You don't recognize, because you got the hand. I gotta look down. My glasses are fogging up. I mean, it's not easy. But thank you, Len. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
We will get you this tile. We won't get you the one I touched, but we will get you, we will get you a clean tile.
I have alcohol in Clorox, you know.
No, we're on a budget. We're on a budget. Thank you. Next, we'll go in order here. We have the Honorable Seth Maggian, our Treasurer for the State of Rhode Island.
Good evening, everyone. Can y'all hear me?
You got it.
All right, well, congratulations, and thank you to all of the members of the council and the school committee for your service. Each of you is stepping up and taking on the challenge of being leaders in your community. I think in almost every case, once again, thank you as well to the family and friends of the town council and school committee members. It is very much a team effort and a family effort, and no one does this alone. I want to thank and recognize my other colleagues in government who are here, Senator Reed, Secretary Gorbaya, Attorney General Nerona, Representatives Courtford and McGaw, and I believe Edwards is here as well, and Senator Seventy. And Len Katzman, thank you for your service to the town of Portsmouth and the state of Rhode Island as well. Service is important all across the state, but the town of Portsmouth holds an important place in the history of Rhode Island and our country. You are each part of a legacy of nearly 400 years, during which time the people of Portsmouth have given the example, and Portsmouth has been the beacon for civil liberty and tolerance ever since the days of Ann Hutchinson and John Clark and William Cottington. That unique and special history continues, you know, through the centuries, through the Battle of Rhode Island and the First Rhode Island Regiment, and then the more modern-day military heritage of Portsmouth. My grandfather shipped out to the Pacific, you know, from Melville, and I know even today, countless residents and businesses in the town of Portsmouth are employed in the defense of our nation, and that's a very special thing. On top of it all, Portsmouth is a great town, a great town to live in, in no small part due to the work of the people on the Zoom. So thank you all. I know we're not supposed to pick favorites, and I love you all equally, but I will agree with what Senator Reed said earlier, that as a former public school teacher, I know that school committee is the toughest job in government, but also one of the most important. And I look forward to working with each of you in the coming years to improve the school facilities in the town of Portsmouth. I remember when we were working on the statewide school construction plan a couple of years ago, we came down and we toured the middle school, you know, along with the governor and a number of other officials. And, you know, it's my hope that working together these next couple of years, we'll be able to find a joint solution for the students of Portsmouth in the middle school and throughout the system. But tonight is a night to say thank you and to celebrate your elections and your inaugurations tonight. Honored to serve with each and every one of you in government, and I thank you all for what you're doing. Have a good night.
Thanks. Next, we'll be moving on to the Honorable Peter Nero, our Rhode Island Attorney General.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to be with you. I call myself as a bit of a Portsmouth expatriate, because my grandfather, at the early turn of the 19th century, went from Portsmouth to Jamestown at the age of three. The Naronas have been there ever since, so I hope you won't hold that against me. If there was ever a place to leave to, I suppose it would be Jamestown, but Portsmouth's a lovely place. You know, I enjoyed watching Democracy in Action tonight, as you folks elected your vice president and president of your town council. It's a great thing that you've done and are doing, and congratulations to all of you. You know, earlier tonight, I had the privilege as a fourth-generation Jamestowner now, of swearing in the Jamestown Town Council. And I will tell you, they had a very busy agenda tonight. You know, as the open meetings regulator in the state, that agenda complied to the nth detail with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. I hope you don't have a similar business meeting ahead of you. I hope you will use good sense, and don't share this with my Jamestown friends. Maybe I shouldn't say "go out." Go home. Celebrate virtue through my phone. You know, public service in the form of a local town council, city council, school committee, town moderator, my friend John Murphy serves that purpose in Jamestown, is democracy at its best. In many ways, it is thankless. You know, I remember when my sons, both of them had the good fortune to become Eagle Scouts, and the town council in Jamestown recognized both of them, and so we went, my wife and I went with them to watch them, get their recognition, and frankly, to hear the issues that the town council was dealing with on that evening, you know, instilled in me a profound respect for the work that you do, issues big and small, you take them all on, you keep cool under the most trying of circumstances, and you should really be applauded for that. I'll end with, you know, an acknowledgement of thanks to my friend Len Katzman. I don't remember what prompted us to meet Len, but I know where it was. It was in a coffee shop in the India Point section of Providence, and we had a great discussion about Rhode Island and what's important and what government ought to do for people. And so I thank you for that conversation, for your counsel and advice over the years. Linda, you've been a friend as well to me, as well as many of the others on this Zoom tonight. I wish you all very, very well, and thank you for allowing me a moment to share a few words. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nero. Next, we have the Honorable Terry Courtman, our very own senator, representative, sorry, sorry, Terry, sorry.
He's on the call. I can't take that. I'm here tonight to congratulate you all on being reelected, especially, I'll give a shout out to my former colleagues on the school committee. I agree, toughest job in government. But I'm also here tonight to recognize with all of you outgoing council members, Len Katzman, who's one of my constituents, and so on behalf of the House, I will bring this citation in person, but I want to recognize you, the House citation, for your past two years of service on the council and for the many years you have dedicated to the town of Portsmouth. We do appreciate your service, and I look forward to continuing to engage with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I do know that we also have a few more folks online. We have Representative Edwards, Representative McGaw, and Senator Seventy. Let me see, Mr. Edwards, would you like to say a word?
I'll just say congratulations to everyone who just sworn in. I served in the town council in Tiverton. I know what a hard job it can be, and I really appreciate all the work you do for your constituents, and we hope to continue working with you in the coming term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. We all, we have Senator Seventy.
Hey, everybody. It's a pleasure to sit here and watch all this unfold. I'd like to start just by offering my heartfelt thanks and appreciation and admiration for Len Katzman. Len and I started out together in this business back in 2004. We were elected onto the town council together. That was our first terms council. It's been a pleasure every moment serving with Len. In fact, I've enjoyed serving on the town council. I did, I forget how many terms, I think six. Enjoyed every moment, the service, the interaction with both the constituents and my fellow councilors, it's been just a distinct pleasure. And I'm glad I did it. And I want to just say to all of you, fair winds and a following sea. I hope that we have maybe bummer times ahead of us, but whatever is ahead of us, I have the utmost confidence that you can all serve with distinction and with effectiveness and certainly honor. Just pleased and proud to be a part of. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Seventy. And we now have our new representative elected, Michelle McGaw. Ms. McGaw, would you like to say a word?
Yes, I would just like to say thank you to everybody. I thank everyone for their service. I'm honored to be applauded with you and look forward to working with all of you a little bit more closely in the coming years. Now, as everybody, you know, it's a big undertaking for all of you, and so I thank you for your dedication to the town. And I also want to make a special recognition also to Len Katzman, who is, you know, he's been such an inspiration to me, and I've learned a lot from him interacting with people and about how to better serve our community. Len, I see you as somebody who is leading me in the right direction, and I look forward to you continuing to do so. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGaw. Okay, would anyone else? I'll open the floor here, if anyone else. I think I covered everybody. I apologize if I, there's a long list here, so I'm trying to make sure we've covered everybody. I think. All right. Well, thank you all. I wish nothing but the best for our members of the school committee. I know you've got some challenges ahead of you, as we, I think you've heard tonight, it is a very, a very, a very tough position, so thank you all for jumping in to the ring. Some of you have been there before. Ms. Kelly, we wish you all the best here, as you dip your toe into the waters, and to my fellow members of the council. A lot of familiar faces. Welcome back, Mr. Buttermeyer. Tonight, we did our elections, and we need to hit the ground running with our meeting next week, so we don't have a lot of time. We have a meeting on the 14th, so I look forward to seeing you all on the 14th. And thank you all for participating tonight, and be safe, and. Motion two and Jer. Seconded. All those in favor?
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed at seven zero. Thank you all, and councilors, I'll see you in a week. Good night. Good night.